I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being videotaped at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Reading, Mass. This meeting is being videotaped for distribution to the community television stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. I also want to read our code of conduct. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment, discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda, as well on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair, and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chairman to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. So with that, just introductions, we have our representative from the CAB here tonight. Welcome.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to add anything?
I'm good.
Okay, very good. We also have a request from the public for a public comment. Mary Ellen, if you want to come up, please. So the cable TV can hear you.
You know the drill, right?
Hi, thank you. My name is Mary Ellen O'Neil. I live at 125 Summer Avenue in Reading. I am a current and longtime member of Town Meeting, a former member of the CAB, a former member of this Board, and former Chairman of the Board. And I wanted to talk to you tonight, since it's -- you are considering the tree trimming bid. It's not about the bid in particular, but it is about the tree trimming program, and something that I would like to ask the Board to consider in its new budget year. So almost three years ago, when a new company, my understanding, when a new company was given the tree trimming contract, changes were made in how the trees were trimmed. More was taken, the span is wider. And as a result, there was a lot of unhappiness, at least in the town of Reading, about what was happening to some of the street trees with the new approach. It's not unique to the RMLD. I think the IOUs are doing it, a lot of municipals and other utilities are doing it. I actually called the person, the staff person down at the Hingham Municipal Light Plant where my son lives, and knowing that they have a big tree cover down there, and they're having similar problems down there. Actually, it sounds a little worse, there's a lot of conflict between the Hingham Municipal Light and their DPW with how the tree trimming is going. So in the tree world, any cuts on the trees, small or large, are considered wounds. They're actually a very great stress on the tree, and the more there are and the deeper they go, the more stressful it is for the tree. And all our street trees are under stress, their location, the multi-year drought that we've been facing, climate change, they're just under attack. In addition, some number of trees have to be taken down each year for various reasons. And so what I would like to ask the Board to consider, and when they get after the first of the year and start to prepare the budget and look at fiscal year '19, is to consider some compensation. I have to look at as compensation for what's being done to the trees in order to accommodate, and I understand, you know, to improve the reliability statistics and electrical service that we increasingly depend on, to keep that running more smoothly, you know, this is the way it's going. But I think it would be fair and just to consider some compensation for the trees, and setting aside some amount of money to give to the municipalities to, you know, plant some substantial trees in their communities. So that's my request.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
No. Okay.
Sure.
Very good. As we go forward, should consider it, yes?
Yes.
Okay. We will.
Thank you. Sorry I can't stay this evening, I looked at the board pack and it's all extremely interesting, and I wish you a good evening. Thank you.
Don't you miss it?
It's very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. What I'd like to do now is not do the Board minutes, but skip to item six, which is the presentation of the audit, and ask Frank and Zachary to come on up and make their presentation.
My name is Frank Byron. I'm the President of Melanson Heath CPAs, and this is Zach Fentras, who was the Audit Manager for the Department's Audit this past year. We're here this evening to walk through the highlights of the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2017. The actual work for the audit was accomplished in mid to late August this year, but unfortunately things got delayed, and the audit wasn't able to be completed because of a new accounting standard that came out this past year dealing with the treatment of what's called other post-employment benefits, GASB Statement 74, which required the actuaries to provide a report based on the Department's year-end books. So the actuaries couldn't complete their work until the Department closed its books, and then there was a compression issue dealing with the actuaries trying to get a lot of reports done for not just this department, but a number of municipalities across the Commonwealth. So as a result, that actuarial report didn't get completed until last week, and therefore the financial statements, the audited financial statements, didn't really get completed until this week. The results of the audit, however, in our audit opinion, we have what's called a clean opinion. These financial statements are, in our opinion, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that's the best opinion you can receive from an independent outside audit. The Department's financial statements are in very strong financial condition. Instead of walking through the detailed numbers, I think I'll just give you some highlights that your overall cash balance is in a very strong position with about $15 million, which is about two months' worth of cash flow. So that's your operating cash. But you also have other restricted cash reserves adding up to about $29 million. So besides your operating cash, you have a very strong balance of other cash reserves. Your receivables are current. The Department does a very good job at collecting its receivables, and substantially all of the receivables that are on the books are under 60 days old. You have no long-term bonds payable, so the Department funds all of its capital additions through the rate structure, through just the normal budget process, without having to issue any bonds payable. So there are no bonds payable on your books. You do have a pension liability of about $12 million because of your participation in the town's contributory retirement system. The town's retirement system is about 73% funded, which is very good. That's better than most municipal contributory retirement systems in Massachusetts. Typically range in the, you know, 50 to 60% range of funded, and you're in a 73%. Besides that, though, the Department has another $5.5 million set aside, one of those restricted cash accounts, is what's called a pension reserve fund that is set aside for future pension liabilities. So even though the pension liability per the retirement system is about $12 million, you have almost half of that covered in a restricted cash account in your books. There's that new GASB that I mentioned before, Government Accounting Standards Boards 74 and 75, which deals with other post-employment benefits. The actuaries determined that the overall liability for the Department for retirees' health care benefits is about $10 million. However, the Department has about $3 million set aside in a restricted account. So that makes the net liability about $7 million. In next year's financial statements, that new standard, GASB Statement 75, will require that $7 million actually be reported on your balance sheet. It hasn't been required to be included up until now. So that's going to be a larger liability next year. The operating results for the year, the Department had a profit of about $4.5 million. It's limited by the mass DPU, that you can't exceed a profit of more than 8% of your capital assets. That $4.5 million comes out to under 8%. It's in a closer to 7.5% range. And the prior year was about a $3.5 million profit. So you had a very profitable year. So overall, just the financial statements are what would be considered by the bond rating agencies or anybody evaluating your financial statements, your financial statements would be considered to be in a very strong financial position. Zach, maybe you could speak about the condition of the accounting records?
So when we come out to do the audit, when we came out, the accounting records are in fantastic shape. Normally with some of our other communities, it's about maybe 70% of them have a management letter. The Reading Municipal Light Department did not have a management letter, and has not had a management letter for the past few years. It's been pretty consistent to show that the town takes their, or excuse me, the Department takes their internal controls very serious and does a very good job of implementing them and making sure that they're operating effectively. And then also, I'd just like to quickly thank everybody involved in the audit. When we come out, the staff is always very well-prepared, and they're very pleasant to work with, which really makes our job much easier, and it makes the audit go much smoother.
Mr. Chief?
Yep.
Yeah, Zach, I wondered for our listening audience if you could just explain what a management letter is, so they understand that.
So a management letter, so in addition to what Frank was talking about with proving out the balances on the financial statements, we also look at the internal controls of the Department to ensure that assets are properly safeguarded. And if we were determined that an improvement could be made, we would formally recommend that in a management letter. And we didn't have anything, nothing came up this year that we would want to formally recommend in a management letter, which is implies and says that the Department's internal controls are operating effectively, and they are well-maintained.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to give the report of the Audit Committee, the Audit Committee met both the Town Audit Committee and the Board Subcommittee on the Audit Committee. Met before this meeting tonight at 6:30. We heard a very much more detailed presentation from the auditors at that meeting. I think all the Board was there, except for Mr. Talbot, who's in Brazil. I think all the Board members were there and heard the presentation. And basically, the, both committees voted to recommend, to accept the audit, and recommended the Board accept it. It was four to zero from the Town Audit Committee, and two to zero on the Subcommittee of the Audit. So if somebody will make the motion, I will accept it. You want to make the motion? Go ahead.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accept the audit report from Melanson Heath this year ended June 30, 2017, as presented.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Then move to seconded, any discussion? Aldous in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries four to zero. All right, very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
See you next year.
Yeah. The item five, I believe, the June 15 minutes, I don't think I approved them, so they're not there.
Yes, that is correct.
Bad boy. Okay. So let's go to item eight. Item eight, the report of the Chair. The only thing, I did attend the CAB meeting, which we'll get to, is the next item, and I'll cover that. The Subcommittee on the Return to the Town of Reading did meet. We had some discussions as to what each side, maybe what we had, I made the presentation that the Board has seen before on the structure of the RMLD on that, and there were some discussions as to, some preliminary discussions as to what the town actually was trying to achieve, and what they were hoping to get at this point. The attendance at that committee was, there were two CAB members, myself, Mr. Sempek, representing the Commission, and then Dan Enzinger was representing the Board of Selectmen when we were at that meeting. And basically, at this point, the discussion will be, is to be continued at this point. There were no decisions made, nothing to be discussed, it just was exchange of ideas that took place. So John, anything you think?
No, I think that pretty much does cover. I think there were, it was very fruitful, and both groups understood what the need was, and we are exploring different mechanisms and ideas about how to meet the needs of the town, as well as using the resources of the RMLD.
Okay. Yeah, my understanding is they're supposed to make a presentation to Town Meeting, my understanding, they're just going to say the discussions are ongoing.
Good.
As to what my understanding of the discussions they're going to have at the Town Meeting that's coming up next, Monday, Monday night, so. Okay. CAB meetings. I attended the CAB meeting also. Basically, the two highlights on that was the Integrated Resource Division presentation, which you're going to see under item 11, so I don't want to go into that in any detail. And the other thing, I just presented the financial structure to them, that the Board has seen them before, before too. So that's pretty much it. You want to add anything?
We finally have a full Board again, with the addition of Vivid from Linfield.
Yes, very good.
So that'll be the first meeting, that was the first meeting we actually had everybody.
Great.
Very good.
Been a while.
Okay, let's go to item 10. Colleen?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have Joyce Mulvaney get up first, and just give us some updates on community efforts.
Just a few quick updates for the Board. We held the Public Power Week Open House on the 5th of October. Thought it was very successful. We had over 300 folks in attendance, so very good turnout. Upcoming events, we have the elementary student art contest, that's ongoing, so we'll have the award ceremonies in January. Dates haven't been determined yet, so we'll let you know on that. As far as other efforts, the calendar is in process, the historical calendar that will be distributed at the end of November. We're going to be holding the holiday light decorating contest again this year. That will be starting after Thanksgiving and go through the month of December. We're going to be updating the website to provide a new, cleaner look and feel, easier navigation, it will be much more mobile-friendly, and that's going to launch in the spring. And we're going to be doing the high school art contest again this year. This year, we're going to target the spring semester, so we'll do the award ceremony towards the end of the school year.
Good. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, good job. Thank you.
And some of those pictures, I believe, were used in the annual report, correct?
That's correct.
And I just want to say, I thought they were fantastic. They were really, I mean, almost professional quality. I was really surprised by them.
They did a great job. Yeah, so looking forward to the Town Meeting when it's on a...
Big screen?
Big screen.
Yeah.
So it'll be fun. Okay, thanks, Joyce. I was going to give, Chairman Pacino had asked me to give an update on the storm that we recently had. The total amount of customers that actually went out was 2,617, of which Wilmington, 190, Linfield, 350, North Reading, 402, and 1,675 in Reading. Now, the majority in Reading was due to a feeder outage, which lasted about two hours, and that feeder was the 4W-30 on High Street, Middle Six Ave, and Main Street. Every single one of the outages was tree-related. Large trees coming down, snapping poles, wires on the ground. So we, our Twitter stats, there were 72 tweets issued on updating customers of, you know, that the outages were identified, and, you know, we were trying to post restoration times. I just want to remind the public that, you know, when large trees comes down, comes down, we're not able to get in there right away. A lot of times, we have to hire cranes to come in, and a lot of tree work has to be done before Reading Light can even get in there. So we tried to do everything in a safe manner. Control authorities and engineers did a wonderful job, the crews. We had mutual aid. We had called for some mutual aid to help us. A lot of areas here got hit, so there wasn't a lot of people available. There's a lot of utilities whose, maybe their extra employees are down in the Caribbean, still trying to support the hurricanes. So we were able to get Concord, Littleton, Wakefield, and who else came in? One other one. Yeah. Concord, and then we had one contract crew. So essentially, there was only, let's see, Marion Street, Murray Hill, and Wilmington was the largest area outage with 120 customers, and Morningside at 40 customers. Everyone else, the other five of them, were just small transformer sizes. In Linfield, we only had one major outage on Summer Avenue, again, tree on the primary lines, that was 320. North Reading, we had a couple of large ones, Oakdale Road, what is it, Abbott Street, and then Linwood and Southwick were all over 100 customers. And then in Reading, other than that feeder outage, the largest one was 20 customers on South Street, which substantial damage with the trees and the poles in that area. So overall, I think we did very well. We had everyone back in power well ahead of a lot of the other towns and systems, so we're very proud of that. We're very grateful that we were able to get some mutual aid in here to make sure that our employees got proper rest. You know, with dealing with electricity can be very dangerous. So overall, I think it was, you know, it was a storm that was well-handled, and we appreciated everybody's patience. And we don't have an outage management system yet. Hamid is going to be demoing one next week, and we're hoping that by, within the next three or four months, by the spring, we're going to have a full outage management, and so that would be very similar to looking at an IOU, perhaps a map showing the areas that are out, and a lot more information going back to the public. And we appreciate that with the software we have right now, that in Twitter, we're doing the best we can to try to get that information out there.
I noticed that, if I may, that the, there are a number of sleeping cots in the boardroom. I thought for a minute we were going to an Airbnb model. Clearly, they were there for a long time and going to the night.
Right. Yeah, typically, we have this room, and we have a couple of quiet rooms, because we'll work 16 to 18 hours, and then we have to put them down for six, and then we try to rotate on fresh legs to make sure. And even when we get mutual aid in, we have to account for how many hours they may have worked in their town, so that no one is really exceeding that. You know, some utilities may push their employees really hard, but we really want to focus on their health, the safety, and you get better safety for the workers and the public when you're following, you know, OSHA recommendations and our safety program.
Question, Colleen. You touched on how when the new system comes in place, there'll be more and better information to the public. Can you highlight that a little bit more, about what kind of things they might expect?
Yeah, let's, Hamid, do you want to get up and just go, maybe use some words with the demo we're going to be seeing?
Sure. The new outage management system, it's integrated with the AMI system, the mesh network, so anytime the customers are out, so that it's going to send a signal to the outage management system, and that's going to show that, you know, those customers are out. So if you look at the GIS map, you're going to see the feeder out, or how many customers out, and you could see exactly where, which streets they're out, and how many. And then, you know, we can get the outage statistics that way, a more accurate way to capture, you know, when the customers are out and when they're coming back on. And then what we do, the next step, is we're going to have an integrated worker management system, and travel tickets that are being issued for those areas that are out. So the crews, they're going to be dispatched exactly to the area that the trouble is, and as they pick up the customers, you're going to see those turning back on, and, you know, the mirrors are coming on, so we know that the customers are back on. It's a very smart system, and it's going to help the dispatchers and also the customers to know exactly what the situation is, and where are the troubled areas. And the customers who are actually are signing up, they could be texted, they could be emailed, they could be, you know, that's all sorts of capabilities, which basically is going to do what we're doing tweeting right now, except at a more detailed level.
That's great.
Can I ask, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Will they be able to see a visual? I haven't seen the demo yet, so will they be able to see the visual from a map?
They're going to be able to see the visual like, you know, what you see in National Grid and other utilities. You know, this year, what we're going to do, we're going to be in FY18, we're going to be installing the basic system. There are some options that it's going to be added. So the demo that we're going to have for the management, they're going to discuss about the options that we're going to have to add the following year. But yes, you're going to be able to see the demo on the map, basically. And the people actually, you could see that from your tablet, or, you know, from your iPhone, or...
So a resident could see, okay...
They could see that.
My neighborhood is badly hit or not?
Yes, they could see that. We could even dispatch, you know, we could even send pictures through that, so the people, they could see the extent of the damage. And it's a very, very smart system, so we're looking forward to have that. That's going to be helping us with the outage management much, much better than what we are capable of doing right now.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very great. Very good. Thanks, Hamid. I think we were, the system was up pretty quickly, those outages, well beyond, well ahead of some of our neighbors to the north.
Yes.
That's right. Especially Maine, right?
That are owned by some other entities. That'll go nameless. Okay, and I think it's a tribute to the Department for getting the things back up and running quickly enough, and I think the Board, I speak for the Board that we express our gratitude to the employees, the Department, and the management and the employees for getting the system up as quickly as they did.
I'll pass that along.
I ask that you pass that along.
Yes.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, very good. So let's go to the Integrated Resource, Bill. You're up.
I was told by the cable TV technician that if I talk loud enough, everybody will be able to hear me.
Okay.
I'm going to go through some highlights for September and October, hopefully some points of interest. This first slide is taking a look at the peak of the summer day, just the peak day, the fuel pricing within ISO. And this slide here shows you what all of the day-ahead pricing was, and what the fluctuations were. So the high out of the three years that we were working at here, 2015, 16, and 17, would be for, say, our 16 on August, 12, 2016, at right around $100. To compare that, these are all day-ahead prices. Compare that to where the pricing was in the real time, some of those prices actually exceeded $100 right around the same time, a little bit earlier in the day. So what that tells us is that we want to have as much of that power locked in in the day-ahead, which is what we strive to do, without forecasting the bids that we put into the market. So I thought that was a fairly interesting slide to...
So Bill, if I may, so we're basically purchasing at $100 per hour, as opposed to having...
As long as our, as long as our forward forecasting is accurate for those days.
Right.
We try to, we try to put in as accurate a forecast as we can and lock in the day-ahead.
Right. That's great.
But it doesn't always work. For whatever reason, July of 2015, pricing just was, it was pretty flat, so day-ahead real time, it really didn't matter. I mean, you really don't want to risk that it's going to be there. You'd rather try to go for, go for the safe, as in the safe bet. This slide just sort of shows, attempts to show you that our peaks, which is a little red line, actually are coincident with the ISO system peak. So the more we can do, that the Light Department can do to control our peak and reduce that, effectively should reduce our costs in the power supply. This slide, this slide's a little tricky, because what it depicts are transmission costs, and I think we've been, we've been telling the public and telling the Board that this year, 2017, was the year where the transmission costs were going up along with capacity costs. So since this year's costs are the highest per kilowatt month, you would think that 2017's costs overall for the month of September would have been higher than they were in 2016. But the peak was so much higher in 2016, it was over 20 megawatts higher in 2016, that that's why the cost part of the... And then this slide just gives you a fair view of how pretty much energy prices as a whole are still in the downswing historically. Each of the three months in the summer, every year, show that the price of, basically, natural gas prices are still in the downswing. Even though ever sources are trying to tell us different right now, because they want to raise their rates, uh, they're still on the downswing. Costs are down, um, this year as compared to the, uh, previous, uh, two years. And this slide, uh, just shows that we weren't saying, we weren't telling you the sky was falling, capacity costs rarely are high this year, there's, there's a significant impact to the rates, um, even though overall our, our, uh, capacity load isn't increasing exponentially if the costs are going up, and that's, he, does, uh, this slide shows you that's, uh, the case.
And that was because of the infrastructure, uh, investment that was made by others? Is that correct?
It's actually, um, because the, if, if, if you go by what the ISO says we need for generation capacity, specifically in, in our zone, um, we're constrained, there, there is a lack of it. And until they finish all of their transmission upgrades and get, I believe it's first light that took over Oaseola, that, that load, that generation that really should be there now isn't there yet. Once all of those things are come into play, uh, it shouldn't be leave a lot of constraints in the area. And the, the predict, the prediction is that poor capacity market prices are gonna go down. We know they're down for the next two auctions going out to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but they shouldn't stay down because we should have enough generation and transmission structure in the foreseeable future anyway to.
Sure.
Help try to keep those costs.
Thank you.
Check. And that's what I had for, uh, the IED slides. If there are any other questions?
Question?
Good, good presentation.
Yep, it's fine.
Thanks, Bill.
Want to the risk management strategy?
Do you want to propose this with, uh, anything before I start?
No, I'll ask permission to chime in as.
This is, uh, the same presentation as you can see earlier, uh, and, um, the objectives for this particular, uh, presentation, uh, to show you how, um, with our current strategy, we're, um, gonna upgrade it a little bit and hopefully, um, show you, demonstrate how this particular type of, uh, strategy should help mitigate risks, keep the rates stable, and, uh, really improve the way that we'd be able to lock in pricing at an optimum time and, uh, help secure lower, lower costs overall. Um, as, I think all of you folks are pretty familiar with the layered and layering strategy that we've had, um, pretty much for the last six or seven years. What we, what the department's done is, uh, typically put together a process where we annually go out for, uh, pricing and stagger how much power we're buying. The majority of, of, um, the purchase being within the first year, and then it staggers in increments following, uh, looking forward for four years, so that we always have this layered and, and laddered, um, set of pricing, which hopefully gives you a smooth curve. That, that's, that's what we're attempting to do. We're, we're not locking in all of, all of the power supply, we're only really looking at areas that aren't already covered with either contracts that we already have in place, um, our stony work entitlements, that's any work entitlements. All of that has been, uh, pulled out of the energy needs that, that we're looking at, so we're just looking at all of these open positions going forward. Um, we're hoping that with this new approach, we're just gonna fine tune how, how these purchases are made. So as I just, uh, said, we look out every four years, and we secure, uh, pricing after we make a presentation to both the CAB and the board on how many megawatt hours basically we're looking at over that four-year period, and what the estimated pricing is gonna be before we lock in on that. And we're looking at forward price curves in order to give you that information before we look to you for that approval. And then we go through the process of, uh, going up for our, our fees to get the pricing. It's a, it's a limit, kind of a limiting, um, it limits us because we're trying to do a lot of, a lot of purchasing all at once, so it takes up some significant staff time upfront. There are significant, uh, legal costs involved because there's contracts that have to be negotiated before we can lock in on the pricing. So there, there are areas where this new process is gonna allow us to help mitigate some staff time and, uh, legal costs moving forward. So those are all pluses. And it also does provide the value dollar cost averaging, we'll get into, or later on in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, presentation, to help build this portfolio as smoother and, so the goal of being at, at or below, uh, final market costs. So this, this just gives you a little bit of a, a background on over the last forty, four years, where we've been with purchases and what prices they got locked in at. I'll, I'll really, uh, at the time that they were locked in, fairly competitive pricing, uh, some of it's still good, uh, but it was all locked in, into all at once, and as we go through this, uh, presentation, you'll see where we could take some advan, take advantage of other prices as they fell by not basically taking that whole chunk and locking it in at once, but try to take off small lights. And that's kind of what this slide intimates, is that what we want to do is look at smaller pieces over time and try to take advantage of where the market is when it, when it's lower than a four-year average. And it's kind of, it's a very regimented type of an exercise that, uh, logically should give you a, a low cost over time. And if you're familiar with the stock market, it's, it's a low cost averaging. Basically split into two different types of triggers. You're either looking at, well, you're looking at both, you're looking at price, and you're also looking at time. If you can't, if you can't take advantage of the market at a certain price, what this exercise does is tell you, well, you've got so much time to take a look at the prices, and then it forces you to lock in something anyway, so that you're not just leaving your open position open for what you want. So there's dates to look at, and there's also a matrix with pricing involved. And to be perfectly frank, this is not anything that, um, we've actually done this in the past with heat rate index contracts. The department's done, done contracts where that same philosophy has been used. We set, set up the contract and then look at pricing in times to lock in different tranches, so, uh, we're pretty much trying to set up a portfolio, just like a heat rate index contract. This is, uh, an example of the matrix where your price trigger, for instance, would be if you're, if you're looking at a certain amount of megawatts for, we'll take twenty eighteen as the current year, and if, if the pricing happened to be within that tenth percentile, which means that ninety percent of the costs are lower, you'd lock in pretty much that whole batch that you were looking for at that time, and then you wouldn't have to look at twenty eighteen anymore. If it was only in the fiftieth percentile, you'd lock in sixty percent that first year, and then tier it over to, uh, each year after that.
Bill, was that an algorithm that was developed here at the RMLD, or is that?
No, this is something that, that actually has been, it's utilized by municipal utilities.
That's great.
Has been for, and I, I think there's some utilities have, have been doing it for a while.
Is it software-driven as well? I mean, do you have software to work with to help you do it, or is that not, is it more of a manual process?
Um, well, this, actually, I don't mean to correct Bill, this is not a sample, this is actually the price trigger matrix right here.
Yeah.
And, um, and we'll probably be asking, uh, Nextera and others to be helping us, because we're gonna be, like, like Bill said, instead of locking in everything at one day during the year.
Sure, yeah.
Um, you're, you're, you're refining it by requesting approval of a matrix that bases it on four-year averages. Um, and then you're, you're having people actually help you that are at daily trading desks, and that's all they do all day. So that they're giving you the price signals, and then we say ye, yes or not, but we're, we're following that strategic guideline.
Well, it seems like a great system. I mean, it's just to, to get the lowest cost for the.
Yeah.
The, the maximum amount of kilowatts in the future, so.
The division, we're working hard to come up with the strategic visions of, of how to stabilize rates, and as Bill said at the beginning, what the objectives are. Um, and, um, it, it seems to work well, so I, I think it will work well here.
Right.
So again, if those, if, if a price trigger doesn't come into play, then a time trigger does come into play.
Mm-hmm.
You can, you only, you only want so much of your position open at a certain time, and so if you're tw, if you're looking out twelve months, you want at least twenty-five percent of that locked in, and you just keep moving down there, so that within three months of the time that you've got that, you should have all of it locked in.
Right. Two degrees of freedom, yep.
Right. Um, and again, just to emphasize, we're just looking, these are for the target positions that we're looking at, um, not, not the whole portfolio, because we're going to get some of them locked in with other contracts. This is a, this actually showed, is an example of why this type of a strategy is, you can take advantage of pricing. If, if you had been locked in, um, when the, when the market peaked at what, almost a hundred and fifty dollars, and, and not let it roll down to when the market was at its lowest at sixty point nine four, it's not the end of the world, but it isn't, it isn't the, the best price that you could have locked in at. And, and it's not to say that you're gonna lock in everything at that sixty, but you would have been locking in the productively portions as they became lower, so you're gonna get a lower price.
Right.
If you would struck on the day of highest.
But that's really crucial, because otherwise our electric bills would be two to three times higher. Right, right.
Yep.
So again, just to recap, um, a consistently applied risk management strategy is gonna get rid of the speculation, and it, it just gives you a practical approach to, uh, help, uh, give you a stable power supply. It should allow the RMLD to take advantage of pricing opportunities, um, it's gonna allow us to secure monthly qualities that are below, hopefully, below the four-year average versus locking in all at once. And, uh, by using these time triggers, it should smooth out, um, any variations and fluctuations in the power supply, uh, over time. So if there's no other questions, uh.
Okay.
Bill, maybe you explain to me, so you went out five years in your new matrix, is that right?
It goes out four years.
Okay. Because I thought, your price trigger shows years two, three, four, and five, right?
Well, as you go through time.
Yep.
You're done with the four-year.
Oh, it's a rolling four, okay, yeah.
And one year rolls off.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I got you. Thank you.
Yeah.
And just one question on the, the variability of that chart. I mean, you know, the energy is provided by energy generators, right? So they must be targeting a certain capacity, so what this implies is that the capacity isn't used at certain portions, times in the future, or demands is just not there for some reason? You know, it, in a theoretical universe, you'd, you'd provide just enough power that.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a lot of, if you look at, if you look at any utility's power supply, it's seasonality variables.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, do we want to have as much power in, in, say, the month of November as we were in August? No.
No.
So that's why you have, that, that's another great reason to actually look at smaller chunks of the power supply.
Sure.
When we show, when we show a vendor our load sheet, we're showing a month with megawatts, and they're bidding, they are bidding on that, so there is that variability that's.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Can I make the motion? Want to read the motion?
Sure.
Uh, move that the Board of Commissioners accept the risk management strategy as presented and authorize the General Manager to enter into purchase power agreements that satisfy the criteria set forth in the risk management strategy. As a matter of protocol, the department will provide a report on transactions relative to this strategy. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Moon seconded. Just for information, the CAB approved this same motion and recommends it to us by vote of five to zero. Okay, any discussion? If there's a favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries for zero.
Nice job, Bill.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Hameed, we're back up to you.
Uh, I guess that the report, my report is from July through September two thousand seventeen. Uh, the first slide, you see the, the report on the construction portion of the capital authorization projects, uh, and year-to-date, you see that, you know, those numbers basically tells you how much we spent and what was budgeted in the FY eighteen, and the remaining balance, whatever that's like. You see that, you know, the projects, we're making good progress, we are picking away at them, and that basically shows you the details of all those projects. The last, uh, the last item on the first slide, it's a routine construction, which we spent about two hundred seventy-nine thousand four hundred fifty, and the second slide shows the details of the routine capital construction projects for those three months that shows you the activities, basically. Uh, the next slide is the capital improvement projects continued, uh, the number of projects that were, actually were, uh, budgeted, and the board approved them, so we are, uh, moving those projects along, and the station upgrades that we've done, and again, the numbers, they show that, you know, well, we are making good progress. Some of them, they're approximately ninety-nine percent to a hundred percent completed, there's some that, you know, they're, uh, work in progress. And, uh, the remaining balance on the last column shows you that, you know, how much money we have left to do. One of those, uh, very important projects is the Station Three reactors that you see, Project Number One Thirty-eight. We just got the materials, and the construction is gonna start in the spring, so there's a bit that you're gonna be voting on for the construction that, uh, get at the end of the presentation. The next slide, also moving along, the system projects and capital purchases. Again, uh, that shows the financials and how much money we're spending, so, uh, that, that is, if you have any questions on those. Uh, I got a, a report on the GIS on Project Number One Twenty-five, that the GIS project is not completed, and a hundred percent, the data collections, everything is completed, and that was basically the basis that, you know, and the base for the outage management system. We needed that to integrate it with the, with the AMI mesh network in order to get the outage management system working. And now that we have both components now, then we're gonna be able to move on with the outage management system, as, uh, Colin explained, it's gonna be ready sometime in February, March, so that goes into. March. So, that goes into productions. And we're still installing more and more meters as a part of the Eaton mesh network to expand the mesh. So, the system becomes more stronger and more apparent. The next slide also shows the facilities, the IRD and the IT department activities that you see on the, this is like, the spendings, the year-to-date and the remaining balance. Again, basically, all the projects are, we are moving along. The next slide shows you the year-to-date that we budgeted $7,685,521. And year-to-date on the previous slide, that the spendings had been $1,329,244. And we got approximately 6.4 million to go, which, this is only for three months, report. The next slide shows you the routine maintenance, is the maintenance programs that we have, we started, you know, three, four years ago. The transformer replacement program through the month of August, we had about 26.68% of pad mount transformers replaced. These are the aged transformers that we are replacing. And the overhead categories, about 18%. The pole inspection, it's going well. Actually, they started the pole inspection, they're going to start it as of Monday. So, we're going to have another 650 poles that they're going to be tested as our routine maintenance program. Quarter inspection of the feeders, these are the feeders that you see that quarterly, the crews, they keep patrolling the lines for, and they're looking for any signs of trouble. And if there are, then we take care of them. So, they capture the, so we're not going to have premature failures. Mad hole inspection program is going well. Porcelain cutout replacement, again, we've still got few more that we've got to do as we are making improvements in replacing the old infrastructures in both overhead and underground categories. So, you see that, you know, these, in the number of these porcelain cutouts that you have in the system, they're decreasing and they're going to be going away. We've got 249 remaining to be replaced, which, as we're making these construction upgrades, they're going to go away. Tree trimming is going well. Substation maintenance, we haven't had any issues, no hotspots, basically, in the system. As you know, every month, we infrared all the stations, looking for troubled spot, hotspots, as well as we infrareding the parks, for the major parks, like river parks and ballot areas. And we haven't had any trouble or any problems on those areas. The next slide shows you the double poles. Basically, the ownership is 50-50. We've got approximately 16,000 poles. The custodial of Reading and North Reading, they're with, the North Reading is fully RMLD. Reading is split with Verizon, as you see on the map on the right. The Linfield and Wilmington is, the custodial is with Verizon. The next pole shows the double pole conditions and also the transfers. In Linfield, we got five. In Reading, we got 27 transfers, 64, 65 poles that needs to be polled. Reading, we have 13 transfers and 31 pool poles. And in Wilmington, we've got 29 transfers and four pole bots that need to be removed. Overall system-wide, we've got about 74 transfers that we're going to have to do. And we are polling the pole bots, about 100 of them, they have in the system that we are removing. We've got a good program for removing these pole bots. Basically, we're trying to get 10 done a week. So, but this is a moving target, as you could see, that, you know, well, as we're making more and more upgrades, you're going to see more and more of those double poles. So, we're taking some down and adding more to the system as we're making these system improvements.
Sure.
So, all in all, we're making good progress on those. In North Reading, we had like about 90 that we brought them down to 80. And now, we've got still some more that we need to take care of. And as you know, there's going to be a surge anytime you have storms as the poles, they're coming down and we have to, you know, you're going to see more and more of those double poles, which we take care of in a timely manner. The next slide shows you the reliability indices. I'm sorry, this slide was a little bit late. It was done at the last minute. You have the copy of those because we are migrating to the new Sprite Point work order system. And we couldn't recapture all the outages in a timely manner. We're still working to fix that. And like what I said, with the outage management system, once we have them, we're going to have them almost on a daily basis available. So, you see under the reliability indices, the SAD, KAD, and SAFE, we're all, and all those categories were well below the national and regional averages. So, we are doing good.
That is through September, right?
That's through September.
They'll probably kick up a bit after the storm.
That's right. After the storm, obviously, they're going to go up a little bit, but we're still going to be on there.
On average, good.
Yes. The next slide shows you the outage causes. On the right, you see the averages for the five years from 2012 to 2017, which the major categories of the outages were equipment, trees, and wildlife. And on the left, you see the 2017 year-to-date, September, the equipment, trees, and wildlife. You could see that, you know, the equipment, we're going down as the cause of the outages, as we're making these improvements, replacing the aged transformers and aged equipment and upgrading them. So, it has made significant contributions to our indices, lowering the outages and reducing the outages and therefore be well below the national and regional averages. So, that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If not, that concludes my report. Yes?
I've got a quick thing. With the tree trimming, you guys now go back, what is it, eight feet instead of the five?
Right.
But if you look, the average from 2012 to 2017 was 4.58 per month with trees.
Right.
And now, for the three months, you're at 11 per month for trees. So, you're spending money taking, cutting those trees back, but it seems like you're increasing your issue with trees before the storm even. Because this doesn't include this past storm, right?
Well, this does not, it doesn't mean that, just the trees that they're coming down, these are not just for the tree trimming program that we have. These are the, even though we've had a number of storms also, not including this storm. As the wind blows or, you know, you bring the branches down, the pine trees, they still, we have lots and lots of pine trees along the main routes that they're coming down. And even if you have a 10 miles per hour wind, you know, they, if they're not strong, their roots are not strong, they're still coming down. So, the trees are kind of tricky because, you know, you could have an excellent tree trimming program, but it's still, you know, depending on the situation and where the storm comes. And if you have other incidents, they still could come down and, you know, they could make significant damages. Lots of private property trees that they're bringing down, you know, they're not, they're approaching line. We cannot really trim those. And, you know, we have had lots of those issues with the private properties. And we cannot get into those to trim the trees.
Yeah.
We can only do the main lines. So, they make significant contributions to the outages as well.
I think if you look at the total number as opposed to the percentages too, it shows you're absolutely going in the right direction.
Yes.
If you look at the equipment tree and wildlife for the average over that five-year span.
Right.
It's about 163 outages versus just in the 2017, it's down to 99 over those three. So, that's a pretty substantial reduction overall. So, it's a combination of the, all three, so.
What's the unknown seven? Like, what do you consider unknown?
And now are the ones that, you know, well, we don't know what really caused it, you know, it's not trees, it's not equipment, it's not, you know, no motor vehicle accidents. And it just happens, you know, it could be due to any reason. Sometimes when, you know, there's an outage, you get there and you expect to see an animal on the ground. And, you know, if it's animal, you could categorize that. But sometimes there are unexplained. It could be the equipment that got weakened and then all of a sudden, let go. And, or it could be the premature failure of the new equipment that you put up.
Do you experience many surges in the system? I mean, you know, people talk about sunspot activity, for example.
Right.
And one of the major impacts is on utility lines.
Right.
The major utility lines that are coming across, it causes huge surges whenever something from the sun bursts out well beyond where it's supposed to. Do you see any of that?
We haven't seen that much. But, you know, anytime there is a sun flares or anything like that, we get the MCC L2 alert from the New England ISO.
Okay.
So, we know that there's a trouble in the system. So, we watch and we monitor that from the SCADA to see that, you know, whether if there are any voltage problems or if there are any surges on the system. We could capture that through the SCADA system. But generally, we haven't had much trouble on.
If I can ask one other thing?
Go ahead.
Just a curiosity thing. Like, on a storm like we just had, how do you prioritize between the multiple towns and which one, where to go to first and how to attack those?
Well, the priority goes with the feeder. If the feeder is out, I mean, the feeder starts from the source, from the substation, goes to the feeder and then goes to the lateral taps.
Yeah.
So, if the feeder is out, definitely the problem at the substation. So, you need first to take care of the substation, the breaker, and take, get that going. So, basically, what we do, we isolate all the side taps and then, you know, we patrol the main line, look for troubles. If there are no troubles, you hit the breaker, you bring the main line back on. And then you get to the side streets and, you know, you see if the fuse popped up, then, you know, you know that area was in trouble or the fault was in that area. So, you try to take care of that, that bring them on. And, you know, that's how we go about. And obviously, the areas that, you know, we have substantial damages and we got, we see that, you know, it could impact the main line. So, we can just hit the breaker to bring them back on. They take the priority over others.
Yeah.
And if the wire is down, arcing on the, you know, on the ground, so that should definitely, for public safety, should be considered as a priority. And we do that. We don't have many of those, you know, but that's how dispatchers, as the calls, they start coming in, we start logging. And then we send people out to investigate to see what really caused it. And then we start putting them back in that sequence and order.
So, that new program you're getting in would allow you to see all that and react faster from?
Well, yes and no. If it's a main line is out, it's going to take a while to patrol and find out exactly what the problem is and fix it. And then, once you bring the backbone of the feeder out, back in, then you're going to be able to get to the laterals and, you know, start picking them up after you remove the faults and after you fix them. But, once we get to the other component, which is the smart grid, which we are implementing, and I guess you guys saw the presentation from Chattanooga back in, you know, in NEPA conference.
Yeah.
You could see that the switches, they could automatically isolate, they call it the FDIR, Fault Detection, Isolation, Restoration, which means once the fault hits, you know, that system be isolating the section that is faulted and, you know, close the backup feeders to the open points. And that could be done within a matter of seconds. But, right now, we are doing it manually. And that means if there is a trouble out in the system, somebody needs to get out there and we need to patrol, see what the problem is. So, that takes time for the trouble man to get out there, identify the problem. And then, we're going to have the right switching and proper switching to isolate it. So, that process is being done manually right now, which could take minutes to hours, depending on the extent of the damage. But, once we have that FDIR system, you're talking about seconds that, you know. And then, the system is going to send a message to the trouble man that the fault is between switch one and switch two on Summer Street. And then, they could be dispatched exactly to where the problem is. And that's going to cut down really costs substantially. So.
Thank you.
We are moving in that direction.
Yeah. Thank you.
We've got a couple, we've got a couple of procurement requests approvals.
Yes.
You're coming to tree trimming. I want to make one statement. I got a, the Department sent me an email that was sent by one bidder on a project to introduce himself to me. The statement I want to make is the fact that the Department has a procurement process of approving bids and reviewing them. And I expect, and the Department, and it should be followed. So, anybody who wants to introduce themselves directly to me is wasting their time. Okay, with that, tree trimming.
Sure. The tree trimming, we had a bid out and we sent a bid out to a number of bidders. We had only two companies that they responded to the bid. One was Davy Tree Experts Company and the other one, Meyer Tree Services. So, the lowest responsible responsive bidder was the Meyer Tree Services. Davy, they didn't take any exceptions. But, once you started going to do more detail, you saw that, you know, they took really exceptions. But, they hit, they checked off, they're no exceptions. So, they took many exceptions. And some of the exceptions that they took, it was they didn't provide us the document that we requested, like the listed employees that they're assigned to the contract, the copies of their certifications and licenses, the OSHA 10, CPR, First Aid, the formal safety program, they didn't provide the number of aerial lifts and cheaper trucks, they didn't provide that. So, we requested all of those, making sure they have proper equipment. And the year and manufacturer of the equipment and the statement of additional crew availability in case there are outages. So, they did not provide any response to those. And therefore, they were not eligible for that, this bid. But, Meyer Tree Services, they didn't take any exceptions. They have all the equipment. We've had exceptional, you know, we're receiving exceptional services from them, really. We were very happy with their services. And they provided the crews, the certifications that they required, and everything were in place. So, the reason you see that there is no number in there because, you know, we have the number of variables that you can really put down, that how much and what it's going to cost. We have, for FY17, we have in the budget $852,000. We don't know, for instance, how many storms we're going to have and how much money we're going to spend in storms. When they cut, they cut based on the thickness of the branches, whether it's six inches, 12 inches, or, you know, more. So, that the price varies. So, for that reason, we cannot really say that, you know, how much, what the price would be. But, the price, the cost differential between the two was $8,000. $8,000 Meyer was a little bit more over the period of three years, which is basically down to nothing with the type of services we get from them. So, that's what makes Meyer Tree Services a responsible, responsive bidder for this and this contract.
So, just a suggestion, Mr. Chair. So, I'm wondering, just there's some tied to numbers. Could we insert a not to exceed number? So, whether that's the 78? Because otherwise, from a, I mean, obviously, you're not going to spend a million dollars or $2 million. But, I'm just wondering, because otherwise, the, I guess what we're approving is just that we're going to use them for tree trimming, which I guess is okay. But, I'm wondering, maybe others have a comment, if, would that be appropriate to have a not to exceed number and at least, you know?
Well, not to exceed without reconsideration, right? In other words, if there were 15 storms in it.
Yeah.
As opposed to a normal year of five.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah. It gives us the open or the ability, the flexibility to approve additional funds for it. But, after review. So, I agree with you. I think that having a, some kind of number in there would probably be a good thing to.
Obviously, we're not going to have a problem with the staff because they're going to come to the Board if they have an issue. But, it's just from a governance point of view. So, we're not just making an approval of what could be a three X number, right? Because the essence of a bid is we're approving. Because the essence of a bid is we're approving expenditure, right? In this case, we can't, because we don't know how much.
Okay.
You know?
So, what do you, what do you want? You wanna put that in the motion, you're saying?
Well, I'm just throwing it out for consideration, if others, if we...
Do we have other things that we buy that don't have limits on? Or is it, is there other things like that?
Well, I think...
We have agreed upon, you know, price or contract, but there isn't really a limit?
Well, I guess from a devil's advocate point of view, so we're spending 800, maybe $78,000, so, but we're not saying that here, so anything of that magnitude, you'd obviously want to...
So, if you wanna do that, then...
Does that help?
Just the motion, let me, let me just give you the motion then. The motion that we have in front of me is move the bid for tree trimming be awarded to. So, after the word awarded, we will put in an amount not to exceed $880,000, around the number.
Yeah, but I like, so maybe with John's...
Yeah, not to exceed $850,000 without review by the board.
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna happen anyway, but I'm just saying from a...
Okay, so that'll be part of the...
Does that work for you, Matt?
Yeah, that works, because we pay them per span, and we are pretty much have it under control. What we, the only thing that we can't control, and we don't have in contract, is the storms.
Okay, so just...
All of a sudden, in one storm, you know, you could use, you know...
Colley, what do you think?
Well, that's three years. So, how would you like me to, you want me to come to you when we get to be 70% and say, based on what we've spent, we may spend more? I mean, we didn't do this the last time, but I mean, I understand what your point is. I'm just wondering if, if you're, you're putting a value in for the three-year contract.
Look, we could let, we could let you just manage that, right? So, we don't need to know whether 60, I mean, you, you're gonna manage the number anyway, right?
Yeah, but what she's saying, if we go over the $880,000...
And there's a storm.
What, what, what is she, what do, what do we gotta, what do we want her to do?
Do you want me to come to you like...
Yeah.
Three, three months before the end of the third contract and say, I think I might be going over?
Well, that would be ideal, but I'm not sure that would be your focus as a general manager, right?
Right.
So, you've got other things.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, the other side is we can approve it as stated, but maybe, I guess we should just give some consideration. I mean, I just think naturally, with a bid, you know, you're, you're tying it to some expenditure, right? I know why we can't.
If that helps, I could provide you the numbers on monthly report to say that, you know, how much we are, if that would give you an indication of how much.
Maybe, I thought there were other things that we had approved that are like an accumulated number, not to exceed over a given year, a number of transformers or whatever it may be, and, but there's got, there's some kind of stopgap in the actual procurement process that says, when you get that number, then you have to reconsider it. Isn't there something in the purchase process that allows that, or is it manual?
It's generally what the purchase order is set up for. You know, so it should...
So, you could have a not to exceed number on the purchase order, right?
Yeah.
And I think on the Mass General Law 149, which tree trimming would fall into, I think you could, you're allowed up to like 10 or 20% over something, like you go for bid, you get a number. Isn't there a certain percentage you can go over on something like that?
Yeah, because there's so much variable built into it. I mean, there's a...
The law allows you a certain percentage to go over, opposed to just saying, okay, I have 880,000, but something else happens.
Okay.
So, it's fairly controlled by Mass General Law 149, or 3030B, or 38, that is how they purchase everything.
Well, I mean, the other, if you think about it, because obviously, you got bids, and you're making decisions based on the bid, so couldn't you just tie the bid number with, I mean, the understanding is that, you know, obviously, you may exceed, have succeeded if it's more storms, right?
That's right. That's right.
So, in a way, you know, you're trying to match the bid, because otherwise, I mean, if I'm, if I'm Davi, you know, I may wanna show up at the next meeting and say, wait a minute, what was the bid, you know, you didn't approve? You know what I'm saying? You know what?
We did the bid analysis based on the numbers that, and we went based on the average numbers, and that's what it showed.
Yeah, no, I, I understand the problem. I guess, I guess my only slight discomfort is I just, we have a process, we've made a bid. I, I think part of the, to Dennis's point too, is if, if, if running the business requires us to spend more than the bid, you know, that's, it's not because, you know, they've increased the price, it's because there's been, because you can tie it to the price per units and stuff, it's based on the fact that you had more work than that originally planned.
So, they didn't bid the total, they just bid the spans?
They bid stamp spans, and there were a number of factors that they considered.
I don't wanna make a big deal, so it's for everybody else's fine.
Like, how many different things did they have to bid on? I mean, is it like 50 different things?
They bid on the spans, the price per span, the average price per day for eight-hour span, the hazardous tree removals, which they go by the diameter, one and a half inch, six inches, 12 inches, 18 inches, 32.
Oh, thanks.
And the hourly rate for the crews. So, total together, those, you know, for year one, year two, year three, we made a comparison between Davi's and, and the Meyer's.
Oh, thank you.
And we went by the average, past two, three years, what the average number been. And we plugged them in, Meyer Tree Services came out at $878,000, and Davi's came with those, the same numbers, that the average numbers for each category came up to 870,000.
Almost identical.
Almost identical, yeah. The same for, for, you know...
Yeah, but they couldn't meet the other specifications.
No, they couldn't.
Right.
They couldn't make the other...
So, what if we do this? If we add the words somewhere in here at the various rates as specified in the bid? And we're locking it into what?
I like that, yeah.
That way, we're not locking it into an amount.
So, we're locking it back to this?
We're locking it into what's actually been bid.
Yeah, that, that would work.
So, what I would do is I would say, move the bid, be awarded to Meyer Tree, Meyer Tree Service, Inc., and add after that, at the various rates specified in the bid, and then pursuant to, is what I would add in there. So, we'll actually lock it into what, what the rates are.
Right.
At that point in the bid, and there's no...
Then if there's big storms, you don't have to address it.
Right, you don't have to adjust it.
Does that work?
It works. I'm hoping it'll be less.
Yeah.
Right.
You got it, Tracy?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
You can make, you're gonna make that as part of the main motion.
Yes.
Okay, so please read the motion, please.
Okay. Move that bid IFB 2018-11 for tree trimming services be awarded to Meyer Tree Service, Inc., at the various rates specified in the bid, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30, Section 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager, and a one-year contract beginning January 1st, 2018, with an RMLD option for two additional one-year terms.
Okay, is that second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, that motion carries 4-0. On to the next one.
Thank you. The next one is the IFB 2018-12, current limiting reactor construction and installation at Station 3. If you recall, we got the materials already, we had a bid, we're receiving the materials actually pretty soon, next week. But the materials were budgeted for $250,000, and the actual came out to $145,000. And the construction over here, we had a number of bidders that we received, bid actually, the sealed bid from Mass Bay Electrical Corp., Murphy, Valiant Electric, and also the power line contractors. And the lowest responsible, responsive bidder was a Mass Bay Electrical Corp. for $153,920. It was budgeted for $165,000, so it's well below the budget for both materials and the construction. So, and the construction is gonna start in, in April.
Good. Okay. Good. Good?
Very good. Move that bid IFB 2018-12 for current limiting reactor construction and installation at Station 3 be awarded to Mass Bay Electrical Corporation for $153,920, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30, Section 39M, as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Is that second?
Second.
Can move the second discussion? I see in all favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, that motion carries 4-0. Very good.
Thank you.
Good. Appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Anything under general discussion? Our next, we got town meeting on Monday, which is, we're gonna, we're gonna make a presentation. Our next regular meeting is December the 14th. We do need somebody to cover for the CAB on November the 15th on that.
On December the 13th?
Well, is somebody gonna cover for the November the 15th meeting of the CAB?
Let me just check. I'm just checking here too. I, I cannot do the 15th.
I'm tied up that night already myself. That's next Wednesday.
Maybe you can reach out to us, Tracy, tomorrow, just to...
Um, not tomorrow, but my day.
Yeah, my day.
Okay.
Dave may be an option too, if he's back from the rainforest.
Back from Brazil, yes.
You can just send his picture, we can put that out. He's done a great job tonight.
Yeah, why don't you take him with you, Dennis? Save us the time.
We'll just leave it here and we'll...
Great.
Are you gonna be here?
Very good. Okay, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to adjourn to move it to executive session?
No, 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 no.
Second.
No, no, no. Read what's on the agenda.
Sorry.
Read what's on the agenda.
My apologies.
Read what's on the agenda.
Both of the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real property.
And to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Is that second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. I'll forget to pull the board. Mr. O'Rourke?
Mr. O'Rourke, aye.
Mr. Stenpak?
Mr. Stenpak, aye.
Okay, very good. We'll adjourn to the other room.
December 14th is our next one.